Good afternoon. We are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clickatuck County Board of County Commissioners to order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
I'll do it.
You'll do it. Yeah, it's quite a...
I don't know.
It'll be reading for a while.
Oh.
I said all three commissioners are present.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda with the add-ons under new business. Assessor Krista Schroeder discussing regarding adding a vehicle to the county motor vehicle pool, an engagement with legal services agreement, appointing Stephen DeGiulio of Foster Garvey as special deputy prosecuting attorney to assist the county, a resolution in the matter of designated Clickatuck County Crisis Response Date Amendment, a professional service agreement with two crisis responders, and a resolution scheduling a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, November 29, 2022, at 1:30 to review the 2022 application for the public service grant by Washington Gorge Action Programs, and notice to contractor scheduling a bid opening for 1:30 on Tuesday, December 6, 2022, for the Clickatuck County Status Pass Radio Tower.
I will second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the business agenda with all the add-ons. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I don't think we have any minutes this time. We are going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual, at which time after if everyone has had a chance to provide public comment, the county commissioners may respond at that time, like we have been doing it. We will begin, as always, in the room. If you would like to provide public comment, please come forward about anything that's not on the agenda for later.
Or something else.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Vern Harple. I'm from Lisle. And with apologies to Shakespeare, I come to praise the community council, not bury them. I've been very involved with the community mental health issues throughout the gorge for 10 years or more. And the accomplishments that you guys have made in the last couple of months resolving, well, first of all, calling to task the very poorly performing, I guess, past now, community health providers, working with Clickatuck interim, with community interim, and now having your own county health, mental health providers in-house, literally, is a model that none of the other counties in the gorge have. They've all been outside contractor. How that works, we know is bad. I've been talking a little bit with Aaron, and the ability for you, for the county now to be able to work with the sheriff's office, the jail where we obviously keep most of our mentally ill folks, is just going to be tremendous. You're going to be a leader in the gorge. And it's because of your guys' work. I know you don't get, this is something that most folks aren't going to ever pay much attention to, but it's huge, and you've done a spectacular job. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harple. All right, next up, online, if you'd like to provide public comment, star six, raise your hand or turn your video on. Were you wondering if you said community council?
Yeah.
I'm not seeing anyone online. Back in, back in the room, is there anybody else who would like to provide? Please come forward. Give us your name.
Well, commissioners, my name is Justin Sellers, and I actually live in Calamet, Washington, but I represent a membership that lives out in this community, and I'm touching base with the commission on where their stances are going to be with the major energy projects that are going to be coming, and why, where they're at in the process with the county commissioners, and how you guys are moving about in that process, because that's going to be a huge tax revenue for this county, obviously, and moving forward for this. And I was just curious if I could be in the loop with that. Like I said, I represent my union, membership for laborers union. We're just completing up at the Lund Hill Solar Farm as we speak, and then wanting to know process for the Bluebird Pump Station moving forward, and then the finished with the Bluebird, and then the White Creek Wind Farms and stuff. That's all I got. What we got? Sellers, if I could approach, give you guys my business card, and you guys can keep me in the loop.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, we chatted before, or you did citizen comment before?
Oh, yeah. I've talked to you a few times, but I just want to touch bases again.
But not in person, have you?
I've been in person about four times.
Oh.
Probably not with the beard. It's almost right here.
Okay, next up, we have Gabrielle Gilbert.
Hi. I wanted to clarify the invitation for the childcare discussion that's going to be held in White Salmon tomorrow. The time is 5:30, and if you get on the website of the city of White Salmon, you can find under the Let's, White Salmon, Let's Talk, and the header will be childcare. And if you click on that, you get the agenda, and in that agenda is the Zoom link, if you're not available to be there in person, but it's tomorrow at 5:30. And we look forward to all elected representation being part of that discussion about the need for childcare in the county. And the state representatives and state senator have been invited, and they have signaled that they will be coming in via Zoom, so hopefully that will materialize. And my other comment is concerning discussion last week about the shelter, the dog animal shelter, and that there were grant dollars brought in. If the grant dollars were coming out of a representative's office as part of a capital budget request, that request would have an application. And in that application would be details to the project that they were requesting funds for. So the back and forth of pointing fingers of who is doing this and not doing this should start with the actual individual who submitted that request, because they would have received an email verifying their application, and those details of the email, and what was the ideas behind the shelter would be in that application. And I hope that in investigating this, that you start with the source. And then finally, when it comes to public commentary, we think that you have to be careful of the knee-jerk reaction when you get a public comment that is, in a word, abrasive or, and tough. I think that it is important to understand that you are elected officials, and you engaged in this position, knowing full well that the public can be vocal, and the idea that you would do sergeants-in-arms or the idea that you would shorten the amount of time people have to say what they need to say to their elected officials is problematic. It is a hot kitchen politics, and therefore, get gloves. Because I do not condone violence of any kind. If people are threatening and leaving those kinds of threats to county workers or to county elected officials, they should be held accountable to that, and it is unacceptable to do that. And that, but to lose sight of the importance of the discourse between the elected officials and the public they serve, you cannot attack the process of publicly commenting. It's important to keep that for a strong government and strong social engagement and political social engagement. So, thank you for your time, and I hope that each and every one of you are at the childcare discussion tomorrow at 5:30. It's important for you to show up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Is there anybody in the room who would like to provide public comment? I am not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online who would like to provide public comment? Star six to unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on. Lisa Evans.
Good afternoon, county commissioners. My name's Lisa Evans. I live in White Salmon. First of all, I would just like to say it is election day, and I hope everyone has returned their ballots. And on, on that note, I just want to say thank you to all of the county commissioners that are sitting there, sitting at your places right now. I want to thank all of you, because you guys were all at one point candidates, and you ran in tough races, and then you won your races, and you are sitting in those seats. And I, I would say that there needs to be respect for that process that you guys went through. We don't always agree with everything that you do, but the, the fact that you were democratically elected to your seat, that is deserving of respect. That doesn't, and that means that a conversation needs to be had. You know, I, I come to some of these public comments, and I cannot believe how some people rant at you, and, and that is not, that, that does not leave open to a two-way conversation. So I, I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for the hard work that you've done. And on that note, I will also just say thank you to County Commissioner Dave Soder, who is finishing up 12 years, I believe, if I'm correct. He has taken a lot of phone calls from me. He has given me a lot of good advice, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the time that you've put into our county, and we will miss you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners, online or in the room? Please come forward.
Hello, Kathy Moko, Goldendale. I want to commend you all for all the wonderful new parking lots downtown Goldendale and all around the courthouse. I've been watching for the last while. I understand the county Public Works did the work. It's excellent, because I was here when you all opened the bid, the only bid, from outside, which was rather huge. Anyway, it looks really, really good, and I know there's been some concern in the past with parking and the stores downtown being impacted, so this will make a big difference. So, thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Moko. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners, online or in the room? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment?
Just a follow-up about the childcare conference tomorrow. I heard about in Golden, no, in, in White Salmon, if, if your term comes up. Would any of you say if you're going to go and try to get a childcare center started in Lisle? I did not know about this, and I won't be able to attend, but if any of you are going to it, I'd like to know about that, what you know about.
We will, we will be responding. Elaine Harvey.
Good afternoon, Elaine Harvey, Goldendale. I'm a county taxpayer citizen for many years. Don't plan on going anywhere, but I'm just hoping that with all these new parking lots, that all citizens of the county can park in them and won't get chased out. And that would free up some space on Main Street for patrons instead of employees and staff. So, that's just my comment, that hopefully, hopefully, the county commissioners won't be parking attendants and chasing out citizens of the county off of the parking lots. Because I think, you know, we are paying our taxes, and, and also we have an increase of 30 to 40% taxes, it seems, by many of the county residents, and they really don't understand why. No one's questioning that. And I wonder if that we're paying higher taxes because of the depreciation of the wind farms, and if that's going to happen in the future with the solar farms, where us county citizens are gonna pick up the slack and pay those taxes. Like, I've seen a huge increase in, in my property taxes. And to the others, county residents, I've heard the same. So, hopefully, I won't get chased out again because of my skin color. And, you know, I just want to be treated equally as a resident. So I just want to share. Thanks. And I'm, I'm, I'm talking as a resident today.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? Last chance. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? Raise your hand, star six. Turn your video on. Okay. Would either of my seatmates like to respond to anyone?
Want me to go first? I'll take a shot at a couple of them. First, I guess the last first, Mr. Harple. Yeah, I do plan on actually attending in White Salmon in person tomorrow. I didn't think I was going to be able to, but my schedule got freed up, so I'm, I'm curious, and I don't know if any of us, who else is, you know, via Zoom or whatever. It's nice that there's a Zoom link, but I, I am going to be there in person. And that's also to Ms. Gilbert as well, so you should see me there. And also to Ms. Gilbert, I concur with your comments about the public having access to their elected officials. I, I don't want anything that I've said as a member of the board, or the board has said in general, to be taken that we're looking at ways of limiting interaction with the public. I don't think we are. What we're looking to try to enforce is that folks follow the rules, and that it's not disruptive of the process, and that was my interactions last week with with Dell, was, again, I think there is that a, the Board of Commissioners meetings is the board's meeting. It is not a public forum. It is not a town hall. It is not, public comment is that section of the meeting that is like a public forum or a town hall. But the board has a lot of business to do, and it is their business to do on behalf. That's, that's our job. And so what I don't like to see is when that is disrupted and we are unable to do that business, that's, I, I believe people need to follow the rules, and as far as, and if the, we talk to each other respectfully, and we, I welcome those conversations, and I, I don't want anything that's been said to have the impression that, that I don't want to have that, or that I don't support that. I do. I think we need to hear from folks. And just to set the record straight, Ms. Evans, it's, I'm actually closing out 16 years, not 12. It only seems like 12, 1,200, but it seems. So, but I will, I will, I will accept your thank you. And yes, Ms. Moko, the parking lots, it was night. I think the county crew did a great job. I didn't know, you know, we generally don't do a lot of paving. We do chip sealing, and so I was, I was, I was pleasantly surprised that, you know, and the concrete work that got done, top-rate work, as far as, and that had saved the taxpayers quite a bit of money, but yes, doing it in-house based on what that bid was for stuff. So I'm glad we were able to do it, and I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Christopher.
Okay. To Vern, about the childcare meeting, I do plan on attending via Zoom. Justin, yes. It would be probably good to set up a time to chat with me, or come in or over the phone, or whatever, just so I can kind of pick your brain on some workforce there. Childcare thing kind of answered Gabrielle's comments. I do, I do agree with Gabrielle's comments that the public should be able to say what they want to say without getting a spur-of-the-moment heated reaction, and as I'm sure she's well aware, I fell for that once. I think since then, I've been better, and I need to continue to try to be better. But you're, you're definitely right on that. Lisa, I agree with your statements. Kathy, in the parking, I'll second what Dave said about Public Works doing a good job. Elaine Harvey, and here's the hard one. So while I agree with the citizen's right to be able to speak freely and openly to their commissioners in a civil matter, regardless of what they say, I believe everyone has the First Amendment right to free speech of whatever you want to say, including if that statement is a lie. And your statement that, quote, "chased out again because of your skin color", ma'am, that statement is an absolute lie, and I just have to call it as such. And the only racial remark that was even made that day was made by you, ma'am. So please don't continue to disparage my name with your inaccurate, unfactual allegations. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Christopher. I plan on attending the childcare committee likely via Zoom. I don't plan on speaking, because it's not an open public meeting for us, but I do plan on listening in. So, Mr. Sellers, do you know how many of your local laborers' union members worked on that, on the project you were speaking about? I'm just, I'm going to repeat it, just so, so that everyone knows. He said the laborers' union had 125 at the peak. Sure, come on up, and, since you drove all the way down here.
At the peak for the laborers, we had about 125. So at the trades, IBW peaked out at about 400, I want to say, on that one.
That electrical union?
Yes. And then the ironworkers, I think, were right around 45 to 50, moving across. And that project itself, I think, was right at about 18 months long. And then the pump storage, as you guys well know, one John Day would push almost 2,000 to 3,000 people working, which will hopefully get an agreement after the job's done to have another 200 to 500 members, or, you know, people of this area live, stay on, working with the union wages itself and benefits. It'd be nice.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Is it up to you guys, when you're doing negotiations with these companies, to mandate that so much of the workforce is apprenticeship program for local residents? How does that, how does that play out?
So for the apprenticeship program, it's set by the state standards itself, and it came in at, right now, I believe, with the new energy projects, they're set at between 15 and 25%. On this one project itself, we had, I think, at the peak, we had 12 apprentices working just out of our jurisdiction, not including the IBW, the ironworkers or whatnot. But it is something that's definitely pushed hard upon to train the newer generation coming up and whatnot. And it's, will be set with all the other projects in this area that will be going, as you guys know, with big energy usually comes mass projects.
Yeah. Well, and are the, I know the other skilled trade union trades are having more retirees than they're having apprentices starting. Is the laborers' union kind of running into the same baby boomer retiring and not as many workers taking the jobs as the other skilled trades?
No, we're, we usually keep a pretty even basis moving forward. I mean, our union inside of Washington State's right around between 13,000 to 15,000 members. So, and we usually have a, right now, I think, out of that, we have 1,500 apprentices out of our union itself. We can't speak for the others, obviously.
Sorry to take up so much time. We need to chat.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. In response to your, to your other comments, you know, the Bluebird is still in permitting. It hasn't been in front of us. Pump storage still has at least another year on the environmental process, so that's a few years out. And and you guys are done at Lund Hill, correct? Okay. Well, thank you for the update. We hadn't heard. Ms. Evans, thank you for your comments, as always. I have to say, for the most part, this has been a very, for being, you know, a big election day, it was, all the comments, nearly all the comments were, were very polite and respectful. And then, Ms. Harvey, part of our agreement when we built this building was to increase the number of parking lot, parking spaces available downtown, and we successfully did that. There will be some parking lots that we will have, or parking spots that will have cordoned off for our new fleet vehicles. But for the most part, most of these parking spots are available to the public, for employees and generally anybody, the public at large. And I think that's all I have. I'm not missing any. And to Vern, thank you for your kind comments. It was, it's been a long slog, and we're just still just getting started, and we got a long ways to go. Thank you. With that, I am going to close public comment for the day. Thank you all for logging on. We will move into our miscellaneous reports from the Lisle Community Council. Vern, if you would please come forward.
I, I have the actual sign. I had emailed the, the regular letter, but here's the signed one.
We've had a chance.
And just sort of show and tell. Here's the pictures.
Thank you.
I'm asking for consideration to be removed. You, you all are aware that I've been here haranguing for a year or two, or 10, or 20. You you all are aware that I've been here haranguing for a year or two or ten or twenty.
Well, that was actually perfect.
Well, and one of our commissioners up on the dais right there is also quite involved with this. Just for the folks' background, we have a Forest Service property that has recently reluctantly agreed that there is some sort of possible easement. I would ask Commissioner Sodder to keep me honest, but they recently reviewed it in our meetings with them. And they admit that, yes, the property came with an easement or some sort of a disagreement of what legal term it might be of an easement. But there is an easement. The Forest Service admits it. The barrier is clearly on highway department property, not the railroad. You can see from the first picture that that barrier is just a few feet off the road. When you look at the county maps, it it's maybe a joint property. You know, a lot of times highway fourteen and the railroad are ridiculously close to each other. But in this spot, they're not. The the overriding concern is the accidents, the accident, one accident in a couple of different times. Incidents where our emergency services folks could not get to this fully recognized recreational property. People getting to that recreational property properly, not crossing the railroad tracks, but actually taking the boat around. So there's no issue. There is a recreational property there that EMS folk cannot get to. And they have been the ones primarily urging the community council to do something about this barrier. But when we started investigating, there is an easement. It's not properly, it's not any sort of code. It's just that as you look, you get closer and closer, it's just a jury rigged mess, actually, with three different wrenches soldered or welded into a gate that doesn't work. It it's terrible. It's not wide enough for a stretcher to go through. It's ugly. And we, the people of Lisle, have no idea how to proceed except to ask the county to ask the highway department to remove it or get permission from them for you guys to remove it and have the Forest Service and the railroad and the highway department negotiate a properly built, two-code negotiated settlement so that there can be EMS access to the to the site. We understand that the relationship between the county and maybe the railroad and the highway department is contentious. I think any relationship with is contentious. And so I would, if you guys can be candid in some way or other, give us ideas on where maybe to proceed. One of our thoughts is we have no standing, but our fire department, emergency services folks as an elected taxpaying district has standing. And would it be best for them to approach you, the state, the county, the whoever? If you don't want to take on this, but just give me some political ideas on where to go here. My partner in crime, I think, is with us as well. I'd like to introduce Chris Soling. He's on our Lisle Community Council access. Chris, do you have any? Can I ask? Do you want to talk?
Oh, the only thing I would say is to echo your comments. And that one of the difficulties that Vern has expressed to me, because my comment to Vern was, well, isn't it on Department of Transportation property? And that is that they, Vern and the council have been rebuffed repeatedly in terms of direct contact with them. And so that's why we're really approaching you all as our representative body to help with this. And from my perspective, looking at it just a little more from a legal perspective, it wasn't permitted, it's not on proper, the the right property, and it just doesn't belong there. And we could certainly use your help in facilitating, getting it removed. And then if they want to build it properly, they can do that. And what's disappointing is how one sided interacting with the railroad is. It always seems like heads they win, tails you lose in terms of when you want to approach them. They're full of bureaucracy, et cetera, et cetera. But this was just built, I think, not in the dead of night, but just put there without any notice to anyone. And they also left a whole bunch of boulders up on top that I think are probably a traffic hazard as well. So what we're not wanting to do is increase traffic down there. It's primarily for emergency access. And most recently, when someone was injured down there, they had to take him up on a gurney up on the cliff and probably did as much damage to the poor victim, getting him out of there as he suffered when he had the accident. And so this is really a life safety issue that we hope you all would be interested enough to take the torch and we'll help and do what needs to be done.
Thank you, Christopher. Commissioner Sodder, this has been yours for a while.
Yes, for sixteen years, apparently.
You grew up there.
Yeah.
About fifty-five years.
Yeah. It's well, never mind. More than fifty-five. Not that much more, but yes, the difficulty we are having and have had is the question of, like, again, I completely agree. I'm obviously on this committee with you. I'm of the same mind that this, especially for life safety, you know, it is, there needs to be some way to have emergency access down there. When accidents happen, one happened. I mean, we had, you know, we have real life experience. This isn't, this is not a theoretical problem. It's an actual problem and it does happen when people are there. The biggest issue we have that we are struggling with is what our standing is the county. We don't own the property. We don't have, we don't have an interaction. We have a, we have a basically an illegal placement on somebody else's land impacting a third party's easement. And none of the three parties seem to care.
Exactly.
And so, you know, if any one of the three, they all, the three of them have standing. And so we're always left with trying to get you to care about your easement for a service. You WashDOT to care about your right of way and you railroad care about, you know, people getting hurt and not being able to get them out there and save them. And as we all know, Chris and Vern and myself, is none of those three seem to really care. And I think we can certainly advocate for that, you know, we're all about processes. So for whatever reason, it isn't that, you know, if the Forest Service doesn't want to defend its easement, WashDOT should certainly have to defend its process for if you're going to place something on WashDOT right of way. If I want to go put a sign up, yeah, there's a whole process I have to go through. It's generally no, they don't want you to do that. But there is a whole public process. This obviously is not my concern is that the railroad would say, okay, us and WashDOT wink, wink, we get it. And they'll go and they'll take this and then we'll go down and move it to where it's on the railroads right of way. And which they could do. I I think the one positive thing is that anything that forces a process forces discussion and it it forces education and the parties, the three of them have to be able to answer those hard questions. You know, Forest Service, why aren't you defending this easement? You know, we finally, I mean, they didn't know they had one or didn't want to know they had one. And it was really through this process that it's like, yeah, you you do. Why aren't you defending it? And same with WashDOT. Well, it's not us, it's the railroad, it's not on our right. It's like, no, that's actually not true. And so and I know that our county department has done quite a bit of work as far as the G I S, as far as with the research and the records with that stuff that Vern and Chris have came up with so that we have a better understanding of what's going on. But the fundamental problem is the three entities that actually have standing don't, they don't want to. It's like they don't have a dog in the fight. So we are left as the entity of last resort of caring.
Would the gorge commission be an advocate helper? Should I take this to them?
I want to say in a perfect world, yes, but I think from a practical, the the Forest Service in their role is the commission. I mean, they're acting in.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because they I am intrigued by the fire district having more of a say just because, I mean, because again, that's a really good story to tell because it actually happened. So it's again, it's not some academic thing. Somebody really got hurt and it was significantly delayed. Somebody could have, you know, they, I mean, it could be life threatening at some point. It may have been. Are we going to wait for that where somebody is going to die because they were busy dragging them up over the bluff to get around stall log thirteen here that they've got? Where again, you could have a barrier. I think I think we can start with something like we can have the whole discussion about access. That's a much bigger thing.
Exactly.
And that's going to be years, but we can have where you can be a good neighbor in that you have public land that however people are getting there, right or wrong, they're there. They can get hurt and you have now created a situation that you can't, because you're a bad neighbor because you built some unmovable thing. Again, the first step is like, you can have your barrier if you want, but do it in such a way that it's actually accessible. And if there is an emergency, there's some way to get that short of a tank.
There's a, there's a very specific guideline of how big an access to a recreational site should be. We can quote chapter and verse of Washington state rules. If the fire district was to come to you or should the fire, again, the process, the fire district should go to the WashDOT too. I don't, where do we go?
Well, I think we can help as far as because I'm and I'm going to push on my seatmates to do something where we have some support or something that we can do and we can help as far as facilitating. But in the end, in many ways, the fire district actually has more standing than we do.
That's what I was kind of, I think Chris thinks that too. How about our sheriff's department? Is that some sort of a, it's on state, so can the sheriff say it was, it's bad? Or is that?
Well, the sheriff didn't say that about anything. But again, as far as.
He doesn't like immunizations. He doesn't, maybe he doesn't like barriers too.
Well, no, but I, but again, I think that the thing that will be the most difficult to ignore is that access for emergency services, given last, you know, we've had a recent event. You can't just push that away and say, oh, the chances of that ever happening.
No, it's.
It it actually can happen and it did happen. And are we just going to wait until somebody dies?
Yeah, people are doing dangerous stuff out there, kiting and winging and I don't know, wedding anymore. And there's also.
Could I ask a question? And I I wonder if the county doesn't have jurisdiction because through the planning department and that what this really is essentially is an illegal structure that was put up, that's not permitted and doesn't comply with anything. And I guess the question is, does the, how is planning for structures on, for example, state land? I assume that they have to interact with the county as well as the railroad. And for example, the railroad can't just put up a billboard, but there has to be some sort of planning process. And I think, but I don't know for certain and hope that one of you three do that it would fall to the county to approve a building permit for something like this. And then if if that is the case, it would seem that the the Lisle Council or Vern or I would have standing to complain about an unpermitted structure, just like if it were built on some anybody's property. And you say, well, that shouldn't be there, that's a twenty foot high fence and invoke the planning department. Is that something that's got some teeth to it?
I think because it's within the gorge commission bounds, it would be the gorge commission, not the county.
And it's also, I don't know even, I mean, we still have, you know, building permit authority within the scenic area, but we may be, I'm thinking we may be preempted on state, like on WashDOT because I'm not familiar with us ever seeing a permit on a any construction activities within the WashDOT right of way and certainly not the railroad. When they did that second track project east of Lisle, ten years or fifteen years ago, that they did have a scenic area process, I guess. It was, they did not go through us for any kind of permitting or anything. So I I think, I think they preempted us. I think we're, they do whatever they want.
So, yeah, that was kind of my thinking was code violation and building permit wise, but I agree with you. I think they do preempt us. But in the same regard, I don't know how ideally the fire department or the first responders wouldn't be able to file a code complaint, a code violation on their building on an easement. But again, like Commissioner Sodder said, that might get him to move the Great Wall down the hill farther. But at least then maybe they might make it wider and put in a bigger gate where you can actually get a gurney through.
Yeah, and get them.
If it actually got moved. But I think that's kind of where it is, is whatever code violation, code complaint to the state right of way. I I do like the fire department complaint angle to the state because I think they have more standing than we do. And as far as the sheriff's stuff, I don't know, you'd have to talk to him on that one.
Follow up question. Will there be member, because my understanding is the WashDOT representative is going to participate tomorrow. Is that tomorrow night?
With the Lisle Community Council.
With the Lisle Community Council and I would have the if if the fire department.
They will be.
Okay, so I would make sure, and I know they're they're going to, the WashDOT is going to zoom in. They're not coming in person, which is unfortunate, but in these days, that's better than nothing.
Yeah.
I guess, and it is. And so these, you know, a lot of these questions are, they may be able to, I I don't think you're going to get any solid, concrete answers. But it it would at least about the process, and I would focus on that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, if this is, if I wanted to build a, something like this on WashDOT's right of way, what would that process be? And make them explain that as far as, and I know it is a lengthy, public, you know, because again, it's the public's right of way, just like we do. If we have something, somebody wants to actually construct something in our right of way and there's all these standards for it that have to be adhered to. And I would get them to, it's like, we'd like to see the application in the process because we know there wasn't one because it it did sort of appear.
And there is a possibility it will just disappear someday too. There are heavy construction folks.
Well, you know, a thought occurs to me though, is that I think it is, that would be a really good question because I think it is of a, you know, we have local, we have our local land use policies. But as Commissioner Anderson, this is in the scenic area and it is in the, it is, you can't do anything with that. There would also be a, they're not exempt from, because again, that when they did the track extension, they had to go through, they didn't want to, but they did have to go through it. And so I would, that would be the other thing. So there could be a scenic area component where it's like WashDOT has a process. Where was the scenic area permit? We'd like to see that as well. Well, we know there isn't one.
And that's also back to the code violation with the scenic area, I'd file it there too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll just keep hammering away at this, that and the other.
So I am worried though that, you know, if we look at other recreational areas along these tracks, and I'm thinking of the mouth of the white salmon. And the, you know, they put up a fence on both sides of the bridge, and if you want to get down there to that little, you gotta go underneath the bridge. And, you know, we know they didn't get a scenic area permit because none of these blocks were painted rock colors, right? And so.
That is good, yeah.
You might have an option there, but again, the you're, you're gonna hear back from the railroad and the railroad's gonna say, uh, this is public safety and we're providing for public safety by stopping people from going across that. Because it's, doesn't have, it doesn't meet all the requirements. And so you may be able to say, hey, well then take off that middle block and put a different gate there so that we can get down there during it. And that's, that might be the best you're gonna get for a long time.
Well, and, and again, our, our long, long term goal is to establish a base of community county support with the railroad being the bad guy and then we start kicking it up the political ladder. I think at, at some point, our senators will probably have to talk to some railroad lobbyists and that's maybe how the real world works. But, um, anyway, I appreciate your time and support. And we'll keep you apprised.
I bet you if you took this boundary right here and you went up and held or hung a bunch of reflective vests on it, kind of like they did at the Wash Dot office over here, they'd probably go in there, Wash Dot probably pull that sucker down right back.
Well, it's gonna take some sort of a public effort to, I, it, anyway, it's, it's gonna be fun to see if this gets removed before the Hood River Bridge gets built.
Well, Vern, uh, we also have an underpass in Benjin and twenty or something million dollars.
We'll put that.
And having sat through those meetings with the railroad, I'm, I'm sorry that you, you took on such a Herculean, Herculean task.
Yes.
As this, um, when there's so many easy wins out there.
Um, and so this is, I just, I got your attention for one second, the childcare issue. We have a building that was built as a kindergarten and grade school in Lyle that is almost up to code for a childcare center. That David actually went to grade school in. And we're all ready to go. We're all ready to go for a childcare center in, in Lyle, but the, as you all know, the, the the training requirements and the, the commissioning requirements are just insufferable. It takes years of training to get a childcare center and nobody can keep up with the requirements. And so hopefully I won't be able to attend the meeting tomorrow night because I'm at the Lyle Community Council thing, but do you guys, David, if you could come back to me with, if there's any hope for us to get that done.
Vern, we did have recently, I know you don't think you were on, but we had, we do have a licensed childcare facility in the county that just got done. And that went through that training program, I guess, WAGAP's program that put those things together. And so.
And we've looked into WAGAP and figured out all the facilities. It's just the amount of personnel it takes to go through all of it.
It's the in-home is, is unfortunately easier than the actual facility.
Yeah, yeah.
The training and the manual and the book and you have to jump through this many hoops. And unfortunately, I think until they remove about every other page out of that binder at the legislature, ain't gonna fix the issue.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks for.
Okay, next up, and we're actually on time. Do we want to do the consent agenda now or?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we approve the consent agenda, consent agenda with seven items.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with seven items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And while we're paying the bills, Leslie and Kenny, would you like to come forward?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve accounts paled warrants in the amount of one million eighty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and four cents for the date ending November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the Mid Columbia Houseless Collaborative Presentation from the Washington Gorge Action Programs Executive Director, Leslie Naromore and Kenny LaPointe with Mid Columbia Community Action Council. Thank you for coming.
Uh, is there a wifi password? I have a presentation that I would like to get on Zoom and present, but I'm not sure.
Kelly, why?
Yeah, but.
Okay.
But to present it, oh, I guess if she can get online.
Yeah, a guest. Share her screen, yeah.
Yep.
Ah, okay.
That's my house cleaning up there.
So, yes, that would be great. So I'm Leslie Naromore. I'm the executive director of WAGAP. Today I have Kenny LaPointe with me and he's gonna just do a really brief overview while I'm trying to get connected.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Leslie mentioned, I'm Kenny LaPointe. I'm the executive director of Mid Columbia Community Action Council. We're a similar agency to WAGAP. We're on the Oregon side of the Columbia, so we serve Hood River, Wasco and Sherman Counties on that side. We're here to present on the Mid Columbia Houseless Collaborative, which is a a fairly new collaborative that started to do work around pulling together a regional strategic plan to address homelessness. We were fortunate enough to receive thirty-five thousand dollars from Providence Health Systems to fund a region, the development of a regional strategic plan. I think what is very unique about this effort, it is, it is the first time that there has been collaboration from the Oregon and Washington sides of the Columbia River to develop a regional strategic plan. We know that folks who are experiencing poverty, homelessness, housing instability, they don't know, uh, you know, city and county boundary lines in many cases. They travel to where resources, including housing are available to them, which can put them in many different parts of our, our five county area. So they may not stay on the Oregon side. They may not stay on the Washington side. So there was a lot of reason for us to work together in developing this regional strategic plan. We started work on developing the strategic plan about a year ago, beginning of, beginning of this year. Uh, we were funded at the end of last year. Um, we hired a, a couple of folks to assist us in the plan development. We pulled together tons of agencies in the process. City and county government was involved. We had folks working with law enforcement, folks working on the social service side outside of housing, healthcare providers. Uh, we had people who actually had experienced poverty or homelessness themselves historically who were involved in that. So a lot of effort was gone into pulling the strategic plan together. The plan was just released publicly a couple of weeks ago. Um, and we wanted to give you an overview of what is in that plan as we're now in the phases of operationalizing it, which is where the tough work begins, making sure we're able to set some, set some work strategies and, and moving forward to achieve the goals that are outlined in the plan. I think Kelly is passing out a nice little printout of the, the plan summary itself as well, as well as a full copy of the plan. This is not like a big bureaucratic document. Uh, we tried to keep it simple and easily accessible for folks. We have set up a website where you can access the plan details and information. Um, and it is a, a five-year plan as, see there. With that, I think we're set up and.
Thanks for your patience. Sorry about that.
I will, I will also introduce Kelly Horvath. Kelly works at Mid Columbia Community Action Council and is our director of housing stabilization. So is helping to move the plan forward from an implementation standpoint on, on our side of things.
Thank you for having us. All right. So as Kenny mentioned, this has been a work in progress for a while in our region. We have had a lot of efforts that have happened locally, but we've never had one that encapsulated the gorge as a region and looked at both sides of the river. Because like Kenny said, you know, our clients don't think along state lines. And so when we're trying to solve this problem, we need to not think along state lines either because the gorge is a region. A lot of people live on one side, shop on the other. Um, people just go back and forth all of the time. So we've had many efforts that have tried to do this work, but this is the first time that we've had both Oregon and Washington, people who are invested in the project. And do you want to go ahead and just respond?
And within that context, uh, we worked with close to forty different partner organizations and individuals to actually come up with the strategic plan and to lay out kind of the guiding principles and values for the collaborative in general. So over this slide and the next one, you can see a lot of those partner organizations and their logos. We had everyone from healthcare providers to social service providers to local governments, to individuals with lived experience being homeless to, you know, other partners in the community. And we are excited to continue expanding participation in the collaborative as we move forward into the implementation phase of the strategic plan.
So this was our vision and as Kelly mentioned, we had people with lived experience who participated in this collaborative. We really tried to follow the nothing about us without us model. And we know that the people who are experiencing these problems are going to have a unique perspective on how to fix them. So we tried to incorporate their voices throughout the whole process. This was the vision that we came up with. Um, you'll notice that we mentioned equitable opportunities and support. We really feel that everybody deserves a place to live. Everybody deserves the dignity that comes with having a home, having a roof over your head, being able to shower, being able to have. So as we brought together our mission and our values, those were the things that we really tried to keep in the forefront of our mind. Same thing with our values. We really tried to focus on compassion and humanity, collaboration and partnership, advocacy. That's why we're here today. Some of you might remember, we hosted the, the gorge affordable housing roundtables. I think Commissioner Soder attended one of those. And those were really focused on making sure that people in our community know how to advocate for affordable housing, know how to advocate for their community. We know that when, a lot of times when projects are in the works, the only people that you all hear from are the people who are against it. And so when we thought about this work, we really want to make sure that all of our neighbors who are in support of projects that bring more affordable housing know how to go out and advocate for that.
And then Leslie mentioned that equity is a value of ours and a priority. And I won't read the whole equity statement, but the collaborative did feel that it was important to outline, you know, the collective group's commitment to equity and a few kind of key action steps that we'll take and plan to use as a thread throughout our work as we move into the implementation phase of this plan. Uh, our finding and addressing root causes of inequity, both in our work and our own lives, improving housing systems where personal identities predict inequitable outcomes, using data to drive decisions and focus resources. So equity isn't just a concept, but a practice. And then including the voices of people who are or have been houseless with a focus on communities of color.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? Because I'm, you're improving housing systems. What, can you give me an example of what a housing system is?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So I think that, you know, if you think about affordable housing and rent assistance that comes along with that, considering how you might be able to better partner within that system with organizations that provide culturally specific services to the Native American community, right? So that's one example of the type of thing we're, we're talking about with that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought it was, but I thought, well, maybe there's something I'm not thinking of. I thought it was a new idea.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure as you're familiar in local government with bureaucracy.
Right.
It's, it's the same thing in the affordable housing system, you know? We do have all of this funding to help people, but then we also have all of these hoops that they have to jump through to get services. So we want to make sure that we're doing that in an equitable way so that no matter who they are, they can get involved in the system and get the help that they need.
The bureaucracy is, is equally burdensome on everyone.
Yes. That's, yes, that's one way to put it. So in our strategic plan, um, we had four key goal areas, um, shelter, services, housing and advocacy. For shelter, we want to increase the amount of shelter beds that we have available so that when we have a homeless or a houseless person who comes to us, we have a place that they can immediately go. But then we know that having shelters is really just a Band-Aid. And so when, when we put them into a shelter, we need to make sure then that we have the services and the housing that we need to get them from the shelter into a long-term solution. One of the things with services that we're trying to do is make sure that we have one-stop services so that when someone comes in, they're getting wraparound case management and we're not having them come in and then telling them, okay, if you need this, you go here, go here for this. But every, everything can be taken care of in that one first stop. Um, and then housing, you know, we, I think are all very familiar with our housing crisis in the region. You know, it's not just Clickatatt County. It's not just Washington State. It's not just Oregon. It's a, it's a nationwide problem that we're trying to change. And so we know that we have to have more housing, specifically affordable housing, because that's something that affects everyone. You know, the things that make our county such a desirable place to live are also the things that are forcing out our workforce. And we know that if we want to keep our area having all of those attractions that bring people in, then we also have to have a workforce. And unfortunately, right now, our workforce is getting pushed further and further out. And then advocacy, again, this is something that we can all do. So just knowing that we have a voice and we can make a difference as long as we use that voice. So our strategic priorities, this goes again back to the systems, making sure that we have systems that are inclusive and that are, we're coordinating. So one of the things that happens when we have a houseless person who comes in, they go through something called coordinated entry. And that means that no matter where they go, they're going to receive the same services. So WAGAP is the coordinated entry point for Clickatatt and Skamania Counties. So we also handle clients for, um, the housing authorities so that no matter where someone comes in, they're going through the same process. And so we are hoping that we can better coordinate that across our region, not just in our counties, so that people going in anywhere, Oregon or Washington, are going to be hearing the same thing and receiving the same services. And then making sure that we have funding. And, you know, funding is always something that is hard to come by. Particularly if you're outside of the larger counties. In our rural counties, a lot of times we kind of get left behind with all of the housing funding that happens because it's going to an area that has more people.
Then I'll, I'll just say an example of coordination is recently, actually this summertime with, with WAGAP and Mid Columbia Community Action, we worked together to establish thresholds and openings for cooling centers across the region as we had, you know, pretty significant heat this last summertime. And then we just did the same exact thing for winter warming shelters. So we just put out a press release yesterday that talked about the coordinated shelter. So we just put out a press release yesterday that talked about the coordinated shelter system and how to access those services across the entire sort of five-county gorge region. So we worked together on that, which hasn't been done historically. Historically, WAGAP and our agency, or our region, have issued our own separate releases, set our own separate criteria, and now we're working together to do that. The second goal area is around services. So we realized that we have folks who are entering the shelter system, who are in need of housing services, they're, they're experiencing houselessness. They often come with behavioral health issues, they might be coming out of incarceration, they might have other issues that need to be dealt with, and we need to make sure that we have services that match the needs of the clients. So we can't simply place somebody into permanent housing without having the access to services that they need to be successful in that housing. Otherwise, we're setting them up for failure in the long run. So we need to make sure that those services are available. It includes behavioral health services, physical health services in some cases. We work on jail diversion programs, so having the criminal justice system involved and making sure people have adequate services, access to employment, so folks can increase their income, earnings, eventually, you know, hopefully afford permanent housing on their own. Physical health services as well. Physical health is a, a big issue for folks experiencing housing instability and homelessness. And if anybody has had themselves a health issue, or a family member with a health issue, you know, you can completely overturn your household. I in particular have a kiddo, not such a kid anymore, but is now eighteen, but she was diagnosed with type one diabetes when she was nine, and that completely changed the way our family had to work on a day-to-day basis. And I can't imagine, if you were in a very fragile environment economically, how you would be able to, you know, continue to maintain housing. In some cases, it's, it's an expensive disease, and a lot of folks are impacted by it.
And then our third goal area is housing, because we know that actually having affordable places for people to live is a key piece of the puzzle here. So you'll see that some of our strategic priorities related to this goal area include specific goals about the number of units that we would like to help get developed in this five-county region, in the Mid-Columbia area. And you can find a list of the projects that would comprise those units on page seventeen of the full strategic plan that we handed out to all of you. We also want to work together to help preserve the area's existing supply of affordable housing and make sure that we're not losing additional affordable housing stock, even as we're trying to build new.
How do you preserve?
Yeah, so in some cases, there may be subsidies that are set to expire, and working together to make sure we have a plan for helping extend those. There are a variety of different strategies, including, you know, helping folks who live in mobile home parks to either take collective ownership of those parks, so they don't end up getting priced out or having rent increases that make it impossible for them to stay there. So that's actually, one of the goals in our plan, is to develop some recommendations and more specific kind of reports on preservation opportunities in the region, so we can have a strategic approach specifically to that topic.
Good answer.
And I would also add, I would also add to that, a real-life example is Rhine Village, which is located in White Salmon behind Skyline. It was built in the seventies, it's not in the best condition. It's now going under the ownership of the Housing Authority, and one of their plans is to rehab that. And eventually down the line, I'm not sure if they're going to put more units, they might, but they're at least taking that on to preserve that affordable housing that is currently there that is kind of in disrepair.
That project, again, the preservation, and I'm on the housing board, so that's one of the projects we're looking at. But when they, because most of them, they have, you know, they're either tax credit projects, or the, and they have guaranteed affordability for a period of time, well, that period of time expires, and then it can convert to market if they, if the owner so chooses. And so, yeah, in the case of Rhine Village, where there, it's a, it's a pretty significant rehab project, which we're, which the rehab is more than the thing cost when it was built, but that's deferred maintenance. And, and so it'll be like a new facility when it's done, which will still be way cheaper than you would build a new facility today for that. But it'll, it'll roll over, and so that I, I think we have to, by getting the dollars in, I think we have to guarantee affordability for, you know, twenty or twenty-five years, maybe thirty years out. So that project will not, it'll stay in the affordable for the next twenty-five or thirty years, and that's the, that's the payback from the public dollars being invested into it.
If you lose, if you lose, you know, we're trying to build two-hundred-and-sixty-two new affordable homes, but if you lose, you know, a hundred at the same time, you haven't really gained what you had hoped to gain during that time. So you've got to keep reinvesting capital into those projects that have been affordable for a long time, and now their affordability period, as Commissioner Sodder mentioned, has run out. You need to reinvest in them. They need to be improved anyways, because they likely have capital needs. So you throw some more money into them, and they extend the affordability.
So same thing like our, the one that's in Roosevelt, that's, its twenty years has expired, and it, it could get, Chris Markit in Roosevelt is still eighty percent of his name.
And I'll just highlight that then the last key priorities for this goal area are, again, related to our equity values as a collaborative, and ensuring that we're coordinating with organizations that especially serve communities of color and other underserved populations, to ensure access to housing units as they're brought online, even in terms of just straight-up outreach and advertising, making sure that's in language. You know, we have street outreach workers who go on the Columbia River to the Inlu sites, where a lot of fishing happens among our Native American neighbors. And we want to make sure that, you know, we're living out those equity values as we hopefully bring more units online for the communities in this region. And then just also ensuring that we're helping community leaders, as well as the public, understand the need for more affordable and accessible housing. And like Leslie mentioned, connecting the dots. I think that, you know, there, there can be lots of different challenges that are put forward in the face of constructing additional affordable housing or even preserving it. And we want to make sure that we're helping folks understand the significance of that to our local economy, to our friends, families, and neighbors who are being priced out of our communities, and just make sure that we help connect those dots and tell the story. So those are our kind of key areas in the housing realm.
And then our last goal area is advocacy, which I had briefly mentioned before. Just making sure that our community understands what the needs are and what they can do to support that. We're calling this our roadshow, you guys are the second stop. We're going around to all of our counties and all of our cities and making sure that all of our leaders understand that this work is happening and that there is a strategic plan that has been put in place. And when we put this strategic plan together, you know, it's, it's, it's a living document. It's something that isn't just going to go on a shelf and get dusty. This is something that we are actively working on. We were very strategic with the goals that we put in place. We wanted to make sure that they were things that we could actually accomplish. And I think that everything that's in the strategic plan is doable. And at the end of this plan, fingers crossed, we're going to have accomplished the work. Another thing that we are wanting to do is making sure that we're using data and making sure that people understand what houselessness looks like in our region. Because, you know, when you look around out here, you're not, you don't really see houselessness, but we do have people who are houseless. It just looks a lot different in a rural area than it does in a place like Portland. But we do have houseless people here. Normally, they are doubled up, they're couch surfing, there oftentimes are too many people in a home, so that it's not safe living conditions for anyone, because they have nowhere else to be. Or they are also on the street. We do have people in our region who are sleeping on the streets at night.
Or in cars.
Or in cars, yes, or in tents.
So Leslie already spoke to this, but our goal is to ensure that this is not a strategic plan that sits on a shelf and gathers dust for the next five years. So in my new role as the Director of the Office of Housing Stabilization, I'll be helping us coordinate, and we're assembling work groups to actually start doing the work on the ground that needs to happen to reach these goals that we've set. We'll be fully staffing our Office of Housing Stabilization. We actually just hired a staff member to help with development and community engagement, knowing that we want to expand and diversify and sustain the funding that we know we need to have a strong regional system that helps people who fall into houselessness, but ideally also prevent them from getting to that point in the first place. And then we plan to provide quarterly updates on the progress that we've made on the goals in the strategic plan, both to collaborative planning members, as well as our work group of people with lived experience with houselessness. And then there is a bill in Oregon, House Bill forty-one-twenty-three that passed, that on the Oregon side, Mid-Columbia Community Action is a part of, and we've received some funding from to basically help build out our regional houseless system. So we'll be providing quarterly updates to the advisory board members for that House Bill forty-one-twenty-three pilot project as well. And then finally, we do plan to conduct annual listening sessions with community partners and individuals to understand how they're feeling about the progress we've made on implementing the strategic plan, so that we can get kind of more public engagement on that. And then as a collaborative, we'll make updates on an annual basis, you know, if there's any new information to consider or additional priorities that we should be emphasizing as a group, so.
And then this last slide, this is something that's currently happening in the Dalles. This is something that Kenny's organization is working on, and I wanted him to share, because I think it's really awesome, and it's something that I would love to see our side of the river work towards.
Yeah, so we're in the process of building what is called a navigation center. Everybody's like, what's a navigation center? We kind of defined it ourselves. It's actually, it's legislatively defined, but we expanded the definition. Usually, a navigation center is a shelter that has some services on site. We, we kind of created something a little bit bigger in our area, and we are developing a multi-agency service center, so a one-stop shop, so a real physical place where somebody could come in to receive services and get services from multiple agencies in one location, rather than having to drive around. In our area, folks can drive to multiple counties, multiple cities to receive services or take public transportation there. This facility will be located in the Dalles, it will have a, a transitional shelter on site, it will also have all these agencies in one location, providing housing services, physical health services, behavioral health services, DHS, Department of Human Services on our side, will help folks sign up for things like food stamps, vocational rehab, workforce programs. We'll also have services for the native community, as well as agricultural workers who make up a good portion of the population in the region. So we're bringing it all together to provide more holistic service provision to clients. And we were very fortunate that a community member donated two-point-six acres of land to us for this project. The project will only take about half of that acreage, and then we plan to build permanent housing on the backside of that same site. So it'll be great to have permanent housing, along with the services, all in one location.
And then just briefly, some other key projects that are happening, we mentioned Rhine Village, getting a facelift, that is going to be happening. There is the housing project in Wishram that's happening, that's with the Yakima Nation Housing Authority. And then also, the city of White Salmon is currently working on purchasing a lot of property that will be affordable housing. Not exactly sure what that's going to look like yet, but that is something that's in the works. So are there any questions from you all?
Questions from my seatmates? We do have a couple.
Please.
So how, and I, and this, this is very fresh to me, because we actually, I'm on the Columbia Cascade Housing Board. And we did have a little board retreat last week, and we're, I was intrigued by something that was in, one of your things about, you know, that having folks that are actually users, you know, involved as part of, you know, because it is where it's, we've identified that in ourselves, where we have these, I serve on all these boards, and we are not, you know, we don't have any direct lived experience in the services that we are trying to advocate for or provide. And so is, I mean, how have you, we, we've talked about, we need to do, I mean, it's, it's really hard to get a, a houseless person to be on the board of a, you know, and so I'm curious, how did you deal with that? How did you try to get those voices, where it's not just a room full of old white guys that are talking about this stuff?
Yeah, so we, um...
We do have one woman, just for writers.
Well, you know, because they are existing clients, some of them, you know, we have that contact with them, we have that relationship with them. And one of the key things that we did is we paid them for their time. So if they're going to come out and share their experience and spend their time with us, we're going to pay them for their time. So that was one way that we did that.
I would just also add that we've had a couple of meetings now with the current work group that we have, that's made up of people with lived experience. And we've really collaborated, collaborated among different members who have participated in this planning process, to identify, you know, who might be good to include in that group. And then we've also encouraged members of that work group to make additional recommendations based on their own network. So when it comes to who that group is comprised of, currently, we have, you know, one woman who is houseless and who we've provided street outreach services to. We also have a couple of staff members who have either had recent or former houselessness. And so I think that's another important thing to know about our agencies, is that in some cases, we actually have people who come into our shelter, they've fallen on hard times, and then they get to know staff, they get stabilized and get connected to other resources, and part of that is that they want to get a job. So they might work their way up and start filling some shelter shifts. And then in one case, we have a former shelter staff member who's on the lived experience council, who, you know, I think within the last two years was houseless, but then became a shelter staff member, after living in the shelter for a while, became a housing caseworker, and is now, you know, helping people who were in his exact situation. So he has a really interesting perspective when it comes to his own personal experience and what types of barriers he faced and what was really helpful. But then he also can speak to what he's experiencing as he's supporting clients, now that he's a caseworker. So we really are trying to rely on that expertise and the broader network that we have within the collaborative, including people who have lived experience, to continue building that work group as well.
But doesn't, it doesn't always have to be, I mean, some of the folks, as Kelly mentioned, are, are currently experiencing homelessness, but some of them previously experienced homelessness, right? And, and our goal with all, all of the folks are to get them into permanent housing, to have them stabilized. So we've got multiple, our actual, our, our regional shelter manager has lived experience, but is not homeless anymore, and both him and his wife actually work for our agency.
Yeah, we want that to be a previous experience.
Right, I mean, okay. No, I'll do it off-channel, it's okay.
All right, well, here's our contact information. Please feel free to follow up if anyone has any further questions. If anyone wants to get involved, we would welcome anyone who wants to come to the table and either help out or learn more about our houseless community. So thank you all very much.
Yeah, and I just had one, I think your actions in here, I mean, I like it, it's not overly long, you get straight to the point, here's our problems, here's where we're going, I love that. One thing that I didn't see in here is, is, you know, supporting the creation of all apartments in, in, in our area, you know? Part of our houseless problem is, is we just don't have enough units. And so there's the, you know, the advocate for rehabilitation, the preservation, the acquisition. But, you know, when somebody goes out and builds right now, brand-new apartments on the private sector, the people that are going to be moving into that might have been people that were currently or formerly in the houseless population. But in order for them to move to that next stage, into a nicer, newer apartment, we have to have those newer apartments available. And that might just something to add on in the future, or something you guys can advocate for, because, like you said, nobody wants affordable housing. Because like you said, nobody wants affordable housing apartments next to them. Well, what we found is very few people want apartments at all next to their houses. And you've got a great group of people that have all come together. And if you can speak with that one voice to the other local governments when these, these projects are moving forward, because every unit is needed.
Great feedback.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, guys.
Go build some stuff.
Thank you. And like I said, you all were.
That's hard for me. I, that's my, I'm a solutions guy. Like I just, we'll, we'll just fix it. But as Commissioner Anderson said, it's a really, because it's the, it's the whole spectrum. It's not, you know, you're obviously focused on the affordable and the, and the, and the very low AMI stuff. But it's like the whole system, you know, as you get some of this, you know, it frees up some other capacity. And yeah, the, the bottom line is we have just under-invested in housing for 20 or 30 years. And that's, that's the, across the whole spectrum. And it's just what we now think of as higher-end stuff or what, or the rents are, what you would think of as higher-end are not that, these, you know, you see these units and you're like, really? How do you cash that check that you're charging people? You know, that used to be like a person starting out lived in that facility, that place. And, but unfortunately, it's supply and demand. And there is way more demand than there is supply. And so it's, you know, we got to find a way to, find a way to do it. So, so keep doing it. So when you guys have it all solved, we'll, come back Dallas and we'll implement it everywhere.
With your two-acre property that you've acquired, I think that's amazing that somebody's willing to donate two acres at today's land prices. Are you going to plan on housing all of those different agencies in one area? Or will you have people come through? Or how, how do you see doing that? Because to me, that seems like a whole lot of plates in the air and the same.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on the operations planning right now with the seven agencies that are committed to the space and the facility. This is, this is going to be a roughly $8 million project. We have $6.5 million committed to the project outside. That doesn't include the land donation at all. We, they'll be located there. Some of them will be moving their entire agency's operations there. Some of them will have just staff that have corollary services that will help meet the needs of the client population. And then there will be other agencies like the Housing Authority that will have, the Housing Choice Voucher Program staff will come in and help people sign up for the waitlist for the Section 8 program. So we'll be bringing in other partners. We'll be doing some workforce classes in there. So some will be coming onsite on a rotational basis. And then the seven main agencies will be co-located there with us. We're moving our entire offices in the Dalles to this location.
Is that out in Cheneau?
It is off of Seventh Street, behind like Coastal Farm and Ranch and by the movie theaters.
When are you hoping to break ground on that?
We would be breaking ground this month if we thought we could break ground at the end of this month. So it's going to probably be a little weather dependent. So yeah, and then the housing, we're working in partnership with the housing, with Columbia Cascade Housing to develop the backside. And we're also working with Columbia Cascade on the Cheneau with property, which you've probably heard about from Joel, which we've been.
I'm on the McAd board too, so.
Gotcha.
We're your neighbors the other way.
Yeah, yeah. So there's some land over there that we're hoping to access to. So we've got some good affordable housing development stuff going on in the Dalles, which is reflected in the goals. That 262-unit goal has those units considered in there. I think we've probably got 125 units out of both of those projects that would be developed there.
All right. Well, that's amazing. Thank you, guys, for the update.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Have a great day. Before we bring in Krista, can we do some of these engagements? We have a crisis responder that's supposed to start at three. And so I think we should, we should definitely sign that dotted line beforehand.
Okay. But there's 25 minutes to spare. Yeah, it was time, yeah.
Probably number, well, number three, the resolution and,
First, and then the,
And then the,
The professional services agreement.
The other two, and then we can go to Krista.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have before us a resolution on the matter of designation of Clickidat County Behavioral Health Department as a provider of county-designated crisis responders, and that individuals meet the requirements of mental health professionals as defined in RCW effective November 6th, 2022. I guess my motion is to approve the resolution and adopt it.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve it. Any discussion? Just so you guys know, we, we've adopted this before, but we realized that the date, that the, that the Skamania County thing was, there was a gap, a couple of days. So we're just,
Cleaning that up.
Cleaning that up. All those in favor signify by saying aye for the resolution. Aye? Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have before us a professional services agreement with John Garner to provide designated crisis responder services on behalf of Clickidat County Behavioral Health. My motion is to approve the professional services agreement.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the professional services agreement with John Garner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And it's, that's effective by 3:00 PM today.
Effective as soon as we said aye.
Mr. Chairman, we also have another professional services agreement. This is with Sarah Oaks to provide designated crisis responder services on behalf of Clickidat County Behavioral Health. My motion is to approve that professional services agreement.
I would second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the professional services agreement with Sarah Oaks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Someone do the other over here.
Yep, might as well.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll turn it over there. I did three.
I had to re.
That's true. All right, all right. That's fair. Okay, first, we have before us an engagement for legal services agreement, appointing Stephen DeGiulio of Foster Garvey as special deputy prosecuting attorney to assist the county in responding to proposed amendments to the long-term solid waste handling agreement. My motion is to approve the legal services agreement.
I would second.
Motion and a second to approve the legal services agreement with Stephen DeGiulio. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We also have a resolution on the matter of scheduling a public hearing to be held Tuesday, November 29th, 2022 at 1:30 to review the 2022 application for the public service grant by Washington-Gorge Action Programs. My motion is to approve the resolution.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution, scheduling a public hearing to be held November 29th, 2022 at 1:30 for the public services grant by Log App. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then finally, we have before, this would be a notice to contractors and scheduling a bid opening for 1:30 PM on Tuesday, December 6th, 2022. This is for the Clickidat County Sadus Pass Radio Tower. My motion would be to approve the notice and to schedule a bid opening.
I would second the motion.
As long as you're going to be able to be on that meeting.
I know, it's Saturday.
Yeah. But at least it's a 1:30, so it should be good. All right. All those in favor of the notice to contractors for scheduling the bid opening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, assessors, would you please come forward?
Yeah, they might be the other ones sitting here actually opening.
You'll hear that. Hopefully, there's more than one to open. It would be nice.
Thank you for squeezing us in. We were listening to your discussion earlier. And we, we pride ourselves on being fiscally responsible and working cooperatively with the board cooperatively with the board, other departments and offices. As Dan mentioned, we had had a conversation and are considering placing one of our vehicles into the new county vehicle pool. However, we have a little bit of concern. And it has to do with the changing of the guard and the possible changing of field staffing hours and, and all of that. That is, will be Billy's process next year. So next year isn't quite firm on what's going to happen. We do require our appraisers to be out in the field, to have the transportation to complete their work. And we're just a little hesitant to commit without the board's assurance that if the assessor comes back next year or the year after that and shows with facts that the office needs the three full vehicles, that one will be restored to the office.
Do I get to go first?
I do have.
Best way to show us facts would be?
How's that?
You had actual fleet management software in your vehicles where we could see how often they were used.
And that would be funded by the board?
Yep. If approved by the board.
Does any other officer department have it?
We are doing everybody who wants it, I believe.
Oh, okay. So right now is,
I'm just one person.
That's good. I can't give you any assurance, so I'm sorry. I, I could give you an assurance.
No, and it's, to me, it's like we talked before. If you could show me where the vehicle is being used on a regular basis where you don't need to share it with somebody else, buy more. But if it's being parked and is being driven, you know, 1,000 miles a year, I can't justify to the taxpayers why we have that vehicle. So with me, it's, it's proof in mileage, proof in number of days used, moreover than mileage even. And what better way to do that when, with a chip that just goes into the computer and logs it all right there where you could just print it, hand it to me and say, see, we're using it more than we need to, and you need to give it back. Okay.
How many days a week and months out of the year are you going, driving around on the regular for?
Potentially, it could be four days a week.
Four days a week, all three vehicles?
No, not recently. Like in the last, well, with training, not being in person the last couple of years. So we've,
And it is flexible depending upon the time of year. We do have times of the year where we require the appraisers to be in the office to cover with, with appraisal-specific questions that the other staff are not accredited to answer. So twice a year, we have a timeframe where they don't go out for at least three weeks. And the rest of the time, it's, it's, it's a rotational and then also dependent upon the weather. So, but, but at least two of our rigs are very actively out there on a regular basis.
So your, your third rig is more for going to training and that kind of stuff for the most part?
That's what it's been used for primarily due to its limited off-road capacity. So that would be the rig that we had spoken to Dan about being put into the pool. Just with the caveat that if we can confirm the need that it be returned, there's, we went from four rigs to three rigs when I came into office. And some of that was, we were able to do that because I don't drive a rig back and forth to work. I don't drive a county rig back and forth to work. None of my staff drives a county rig back and forth to work. We also have more of our staff, our, their, their home location is closer to Goldendale versus the other side of the county. And so we've been able to go from four to three. With the three, there's been times when I've had to take my personal rig out with an appraiser to inspect property or with a current specialist or something like that. So it's not common with the three vehicles, but occasionally that's happened. And so that's kind of a hesitation as well.
If I may. See, one of the benefits, though, of the pool is that on those days, you actually, you could, you could requisition three vehicles if you need.
Or five.
If they were available.
Right, right.
So, I mean, that is the, that's the upside.
Yeah, we, we looked at that. And, you know, if, if, if there wasn't going to be the changing of the guard and, you know, that potential, we'd be a little more comfortable with making that decision, you know, right now. But I, I guess with everything that the board considers is just to be open-minded to consider facts. And if it is mileage and days used, I mean, we can provide that if there's going to be software or a chip or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we're all for the betterment of the citizens and not being, trying to be considerate of the taxpayers' dollars. And if there's a vehicle that can be used as for all county employees, and we're all for it. I mean, that's our job is to try to be, do the best we can with what we have. I think those were your words, Jake. And just know that this is like a new thing for all of us too. So just be considerate of that.
So, you know, the two, because, because the two that go out that you're using right now, they have the assessor's emblem on the side and every,
All three of ours do.
All three of them currently do. But you primarily just use two for going out and doing the assessments because they're all wheel-driving everything.
Right, right.
And so that other third vehicle, it will have the chip on it. And every time you pull a vehicle out to go do that, we'll have the entire year's worth of reservations and the mileage. All that will automatically be done. So I don't know if we need to chip the other two as well because it sounds like you're using them both four days a week. If you're using them both four days a week, almost all year, that's, yeah, that can stay with you. But say you and your deputy or somebody else are going to two different conferences. Well, this gives you more options for using vehicles. Yeah.
Later on, if I can talk to them about the benefits of the fleet software and they want to put their other two rigs in there, there's many other features to the software that they might find beneficial.
Commissioner Christopher's paying for it all, so it's like,
I heard, I heard personally, out of his wages.
Out of his wages. That's what I heard. So I would get the gold package if I were you. Comes with a fruit basket once a month.
Yeah, I mean, we have no objection with working cooperatively and, and moving forward with something that benefits the county as a whole. We have done that with our vehicle in, in the past. We've allowed other offices and departments to borrow it. And, and it's been, you'll receive it full, you know, bring it back to us full. Even if that meant they put $3 in it and charge it to me and then fill it up when they come back. It's full when they leave. So, yeah, I mean, we, we just, I, I know how hard it is to try to get something back after voluntarily relinquishing it. So I would just,
Did.
I did, yes. Yeah, so if we have a way, like Jake said, that vehicle is going to have that in there. The log is going to have who was putting the miles on it, I'm assuming. And so if that shows that, you know, we're using it more than, the only thing is how do you track when we need one and it's not available? Is there the ability to track that as well?
I would imagine in our software, because the same, same deal. It's, I don't know if you've ever reserved a room on your Google Calendar. Same deal. Instead of reserving the room, you're going to reserve the vehicle. So your employee may decide they don't want to, I think it's a Traverse that we're talking about. Maybe they don't want to drive the Traverse. Maybe they want to drive an Escape.
Right.
So they would reserve the Escape. Fine with me. I don't really care which one you take. They're all in the fleet.
Right, right.
So just pulling the Traverse's data log at the end of the year to find out how many times you used it isn't going to give us an accurate information. We're going to need to pull assessor's office personnel and what vehicles they used.
But the software has that ability to do that. Okay. One less thing to track.
It did 30 years ago, so I hope.
Right. So I do hope they do, because the, the point about what happens if we, because again, we're learning. We don't know. That people are either changing what they're doing or unable to do it because there is, nothing's available. I don't know how we're going to track that. Because currently now, if I'm looking for a room and I go on there and they're all booked, I, it doesn't track that I tried to book a room. I just didn't get a room and the system doesn't know that I didn't, that I had a need that I, I met my office or I, we met out on the street or,
Right.
So I don't know if there's any way that,
Keep a track of that, keep a log of that. But with how many, with five vehicles,
Yeah, I can't imagine it's going to be six.
However many we're going to have by the time budget season's over.
And also a hesitation is, you know, I've spoken with other assessors that their only option is a fleet. And also a hesitation is, you know, I've spoken with other assessors that their only option is a fleet. And there's just, it doesn't always work out well with when they need a vehicle and things like that, like scheduling, training. Billy and I talked about that. We don't think that'll be that hard. We usually get a calendar at the beginning of the year. And so you, you know, we've built-
But you can go in and just plug them all in and get them there first.
Yeah, but it's, but it's when, you know, and-
Sorry, planning. Screwed, Bochy.
Landowners come in and, you know, we need to go out and look at their property or destroyed property or things that's like not, you know, like the normal scheduled things. That is usually when assessors have had problems with having a county fleet. But it is, I mean, I would assume it depends on how many vehicles are in your fleet as well. But if you, if, you know, if there's trackability and, you know, you all have an open mind, we would be willing to put the Traverse into the county pool. I think it's a good thing, you know, it doesn't get used enough, honestly, so. But a lot of that is by choice. We schedule around it, so.
Yeah, it's funny, a bunch of vehicles going into the fleet and you're like, which one's going to get, you know, pulled out the nice Explorer every time? It's going to get all the miles on it.
I'm sure we'll run up the mileage on one or two and the other two will sit there and-
The Traverse is a decent traveling rig. It does have blind spots in it and it's just not an off-road vehicle. So, you know, that's one thing to look at and that's why we didn't buy any more.
Maybe it just randomly assigned you. Today, you get- Yeah, they call it out, you go beep beep, whichever.
You know-
Your courtesy car is.
What, yeah, what we wanted is just a discussion with the full board, you know, to let you know our thoughts and just to kind of receive yours back in this process. So that's a little different than a one-on-one conversation.
Your question, Commissioner, if we find that the six cars aren't being used, there's enough for four cars, then you'll know the fleet's either too big or not big enough.
Right.
Over time, you either add more cars to it. If all six cars are only used 20% of the time.
Right, then we're kind of defeating, we can probably pull another one or two out of the system.
I mean, that's what we did when we, when we reduced down to one, is we looked at it and we said, well, without, you know, without the staff's commuting use of the assessor's vehicles, we didn't need that many. So, and I don't think you guys want to, yeah, so there's that too. So, all right. Well, thank you for your time.
Question for you while I got you here. And this is going back to switching the topic to actual assessor's duties and stuff. On the, for 2022, so what we just got, or 2023, so what we just got, you know, the county's budget-based, the fire districts are all budget-based and everything. From 2018 to 2021, the state schools was per thousand, right? It was a flat fee per thousand. Is that changing in 2023?
Yes. I have to double-check that. So when the state school, so the state school used to be budget-based. And then they had the whole-
Bill that changed in 2018.
Right, then they added the state school too and kind of through that, it was more rate-based. I know it is supposed to go back to budget-based. I cannot remember if it's 2023 levy season or it's, it seems like that. I don't remember off the top of my head. Can we email you that after we-
That would be great, because I've looked online, because the mayor of the city of White Salmon, you know, sent out this, "Here's the link," and it was like a year or so out of date. And I was like, oh, yeah, you know, it's rate-based. And then it said, "But it ends at 2021," and I was like, well-
Yeah.
And I hate, because people are always asking like, "How much are my taxes going to go up?" And it's like, well, if it's based on the thousand, it's one thing. If it's based on the budget, that's different.
Right, right. And I, gosh, I did see that and I just don't remember. It was in our levy training, but I don't remember it specifically saying for 2023. It just was like, it ended, like you said, in '21.
And then the other one was the EMS district. The EMS district is not budget-based, is it?
Right, they're rate-based.
They're just rate-based.
Yeah, and the library districts are rate-based.
Oh, library.
Well, yes and no. So I guess the library district tells us their rate. So, which is not usually how it works, but that's how the library district works because it's like a whole compilation of many counties.
The whole district, right.
Yeah.
But are they still limited to the 1%?
Uh, I don't think so, because I don't, I don't have any limitations for them. They give us a rate. We put that in. They get that.
Got it. But that's, that's literally pennies compared to the school.
Yeah, they're like maybe 36, 30-
Compared to the schools, but they're-
Yeah, they're like 36, 37 cents.
Yeah, oh, no, it's big. Fort Vancouver, the regional library, I know when we were having our discuss, it's like, listen, you're running a library system on, in the county on, I want to say at that time, it was- No, they, no, because they raised their, so they were limited because they went and did a levy lift like seven or eight years ago. And it was, their old was like at 50 cents or was their limit?
Yeah.
And then they raised it to 75, which was the maximum. It wasn't necessarily, they had that capacity. So they must, they must adjust it within that. And I was like, really, 75? We only get to run the county general fund, you know?
Yeah, but you all could have a higher rate if you chose to go out to the voters to increase your-
Right.
Yeah, you can also do a road ship.
At the time, we were like, when they approved, when the voter, because the voters approved it, they were generating half the revenue in the county that we were for the general fund. And we have two libraries, so, yes. That was seven or eight years ago. I'm like-
Some expensive books.
Well, it's a very well-funded system and so, but-
And when you do go out to the-
I'm not opposed to libraries. I like libraries.
I can hear next week.
I know, next week.
Or the week after.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even when they do go out to the voters, that will typically set the rate for that year and then it goes back to budget-based, except for the EMS is different. But, and so it can fluctuate up and down based on the total assessed value of their district. So there's not a lot of districts that it specifically stays a single, you know, rate for a certain period of time. Yeah.
A library and EMS that we know of, is there anything else?
Yeah, well, and the library, I mean, they, I believe they're still, sorry, we haven't quite hit full bore levy season yet. And I just don't have the memory that I used to, but they do take, so they get new construction and things like that. So there are things that can increase their rate, but I know they give us their rate because they did it twice last year because they had to make a correction, so.
All right, well, I was just trying to figure it out because people want to appeal and talk about it.
Well, and we encourage everybody to come in and talk to us. If you have concerns about your value, you know, we can explain the process and we try to, you know, bring it down to as simple as possible. But having brought your budget before y'all, before to explain, you know, how what you fill out affects what you get, it's just, it's not always that simple. So the biggest thing is most people think that because their value increased, that their taxes are going to increase proportionately. And that's not, you know, like they think if they get a 35 or 40% increase in value, that their taxes are going to increase by that. And it's just dependent. Okay? Thank you.
Do you have a minute?
Yes.
I have a full site break.
Not an hour.
Let's see, you know, an hour later and I-
Oh, we do have a- What meeting do you have a for? Let me, uh, do you want to turn the recording off while he goes out there and talks? I'm going to go use the restroom. It didn't- Thompson's way out there. Forty acre parcel, I think. Twenty or 40. Okay, we are back in session. We next have a public hearing to continue to open to further comment concerning the proposed amendments to the Clickatet County Model Decommissioning Plan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So it's a continuation of the Model Decommissioning Plan Public Hearing. I did not include any revised copy in your packet this week. I do have a note that I need to change the word from should to shall. And like in section 2.1.2, and since the last public hearing on October 15, we have four additional written comments that were received. And I forward on to E O C C. Three of them are from Mr. Wagner and then one is from Mr. Eldrick.
And that was from last Tuesday or the one before that?
Between then and now.
Between then and now?
Yeah.
I don't know if I have a chance to go over three.
You're fine, you're all good.
Oh, maybe, I'm sure I read it though. Okay, um, well, that wasn't major changes to the plan. Do we want to do the full public hearing and take public testimony since we can and then go into? Where's that? Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing open for the purposes of the Model Decommissioning Plan. Thank you, Moche, for the brief overview. And I will open this public hearing for the purpose of hearing public comments in favor of and opposed to the Model Decommissioning Plan. I will open it up in the room first. If there's anyone who has comments to the Model Decommissioning Plan, raise your hand or come forward. And if there are no comments, I will open it up online. Are there any comments on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Star six, raise your hand, turn your video on. Are there any public testimony? Is there any public testimony? 7211.
Greg Wagner with C. Moche has stated each project has its own decommissioning plan and security bond. The county documents she provided me proves that that's not correct. Nine wind projects have only three individual plans. Four of those projects are owned by Pacific Corp or not required to follow the Model Decommissioning Plan. The security bonds are nothing more than a ruthless energy corporations telling Moche to trust us, "We'll clean the mess up 30 years from now." Plus, the applicant doesn't work. Most of the project's decommissioning plans are the same. Only a few have their own decommissioning plan, but that's nothing more than the county's useless Model Decommissioning Plan being copied. None of these corporations have paid a dime in towards a security bond. They are supposed to pay on a straight-line basis, beginning at year seven, and be fully funded in 20 years. That hasn't happened. 30 years from now, that will leave citizens paying for the cleanup. All the mistakes are hurting the citizens. The reasons these corporations want to do business here is they dictate to the county and the county follows. And that, and what a, what a deal for the big business. We are told to trust the process. If this, let's make a deal, is the process. It isn't working for the citizens. If you commissioners would have thoroughly studied the Model Decommissioning Plan, you would have found the big mistake due to this revision. This mistake will become major lawsuits for the, from the renewable corporations. You bend over backwards for these corporations and give them everything they want, never thinking of the impacts of the citizens. Your wait-and-see approach to governing is dangerous. Two new enforceable Model Decommissioning Plans are needed, but that would require work. If you adopt this plan as written, you will have failed the citizens again.
Mr. Wagner, I just wanted to make sure that was verbatim the same that you had written in your email of, huh? Okay, I was trying to make sure. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Ms. Baske.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment on the Model Decommissioning Plan for Clickatet County for Renewable Energies. I don't approve of how that modeling just decommissioning plan looks right now. I've testified before. I appreciated the three additions that were added to try to protect the county. But my point is of why I don't approve how it's written right now is that I don't believe it protects the county. I don't believe it has legal teeth. And I don't believe that you can hold these large corporations and their legal teams back with this Model Decommissioning Plan. And if your goal is to protect the land of the county when these renewable energy sites come to the end of their life, then you should be putting all your efforts into making sure that this has all the legalities that you need in order to make it stick with these corporations. And as I witnessed you talking to the corporation last time, I heard the corporation saying they don't want these new conditions and they don't want this and they don't want to put down security bonds. So again, I do not believe as of date, this decommissioning plan has legal teeth. I've asked for it to be sent to the land or the planning commission in order for them to look at it. And if you're, again, I'm going to say, if your goal is to protect the land of the county from not having this trash left behind when these projects end, you'll put more effort into it. You'll get more legal advice. You'll get more community advice on this. Otherwise, you'll be leaving with these corporations and their legal teams, you'll be leaving the mess to the landowners. And when the landowners walk away, you'll be leaving the mess to the county. So please, at this time, continue looking at this, continue making sure that the loopholes are in place and that the county can hold on this decommissioning plan and that it has a legality standing and you don't leave the mess behind. Or when these corporations want to leave the mess behind. And it has happened in other places. The windmills have been left behind, solar panels have been left behind when projects come to the end of their life. Don't let this happen to Clickatet County and don't let this happen to the landowners who trust that our county would protect them when they agreed to put in these renewable energy facilities on their land. So please send this to the planning commission, get more legal advice and really look at this plan. If your aim is to protect the future of Clickatet County, please don't approve it today. Thank you. Oh, and I'd like to remind you that you are to take the testimony in consideration of the people who have spoken, not of the 22,000 other miscellaneous people who have not spoken up. You are to consider the testimonies given. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baske. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Please come forward.
Candy Magnusson. I agree with Sherry because if these are foreign countries, they can walk anytime. There's no way in hell, we've got the money to go follow them and get anything back from them. So they can go bankrupt. They have done it. I think President Obama, when this first started out, he had, in California, he approved some solar company down there and it went bankrupt. Who pays for that? We do. And so as a taxpayer, I feel they need to do a little bit more, look into this and get some more security bond, something to protect us. We've already had one mess in Clickatet County. I won't mention names, but the taxpayers had to clean it up. Okay, so I think that we need to get some more information and get some more security on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magnusson. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the, Elaine Harvey?
Yeah, Jacob, I would like to provide a testimony, but I'll just be called a liar again. That's my end.
Does that conclude your public testimony?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Because I'm just going to get called a liar again. No respect by the Commissioner Christopher.
Ms. Harvey, you won't be called a liar by me. I'd be happy to take your public testimony if you'd like.
I will not bow down to Christopher.
Okay. Thank you for your public testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Last chance. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the Model Decommissioning Plan? Okay. Clarification of public statements, questions of staff, et cetera, from my seatmates?
Question to the planning director. The statement that was one of the folks made about there has not been any dollars funded into security deposits. I'm assuming we're talking about wind projects because that's the only projects that we would have that are old enough, starting at seven. Is that accurate, not accurate? Do you care to comment on that?
It's not accurate. We do have different forms of financial security in the current Model Decommissioning Plan. There are several options that are available for the developer or the permit holders to choose from. So we have company chose to have parent guarantee. So with those that you're not necessarily required to have a dollar amount deposit with the county or with the bank. We do have one project that actually has an escrow account that we're receiving bank statement every month. There are a couple of projects that are owned by utility. And some of those may not be necessarily considered as public utility. But, but those such as Pacific Corps at the time. But those were negotiated and the company provided sufficient information to support us to not require them to put down any escrow with the county. We do have an agreement with them and they, and they support. They, they provide the planning department every year about their, you know, financial security, their corporate statements. They gave us an updated salvage values and all those that we put in as in conditions of approval. They meet those requirements. They provide those documents to us every April annually.
Okay, follow up if I may. So if I understand, is there any current project that is out of compliance or has been out of compliance with the, with the, their permit specific to the decommissioning?
So that, so for one wind project that is a component that a small portion of the wind project, which is Windy Pond, Windy Flats Project, the developer has an agreement with a public utility in California. They have a power purchase agreement for 10 years. And then they actually transfer the ownership to this utility. And that's the Sherlock Irrigation District. And so as I was doing my research and I realized I did not have any updated plan from them for a while. And so I actually contacted them. And that's when I find out that the project was actually sold, but they are a public utility. And they wouldn't require to have any, you know, money deposit into an account anyway. But I did point out that they are not in full compliance at this point. And they are required to, you know, provide us with an updated decommissioning plan just for that small portion, I believe it's 47 turbines. And they will need to turn that into us. But for the rest of the Windy Pond, Windy Flats Project, we do have a current decommissioning plan in place.
Clarification question, either the public is confused or I'm confused. Does this new Model Decommissioning Plan, if approved, put all the conditions of this Model Decommissioning Plan on every single one of the past ones that are already built? Do they have to renegotiate their contracts? Or is this only for current ones that are going in?
I believe this is, will be for any project that require you to have a decommissioning plan because going forward, because what happened in the past is they meet, they met the county requirement at the time. The update is to just clarify, you know, the provision, this is for both wind and solar. And, you know, we, we do recognize parent guarantee may have some issues. The, the risk is higher, you know, based on the conversation I had with the prosecutors in the treasurer's office. Therefore, we recommend to remove that as one form of the financial security. And we also trying to not to allow the salvage value to be accounted for the total cost of decommissioning. So it does not go back to revisit. Whether we adopt this proposal or not, it does not affect all those wind projects that we have a decommissioning plan on file.
That's what I thought. Thank you, ma'am.
Other clarifications? Okay. Let us move into discussion of the board and there may be some clarifications as well. And is anybody, would, would anybody like to start discussion? I will. As I've looked into this and the concerns and the emails and the public testimony, the parent guarantee, as I stated at the beginning, was what I was concerned about. And just because you're double A rated today, doesn't mean you're going to be double A rated tomorrow. And just because you have however many billions of dollars of assets currently there, doesn't mean you'll have them tomorrow. And I've always been in favor of the bond. And what I'm not in favor of is escrow accounts with the county. Because what that does is it lets them think that if we pay enough money into the escrow account, we can just walk away. I'm a firm believer that the security bond, much like any other bond from any other contract that we do road wise or anything else, is probably the best way to secure the, the safety of, in the, of the citizens so that whether it's year one or it's year 20, whether it's three inch hail or two inch hail or whatever the, the cause is, whether it be natural disaster, that somebody has bonded and backed that so that that will be cleaned up. And I would hope that, that these companies also have insurance that would, you know, if something happened as well. But I don't know if they have insurance because I know like with regards to timber project, you know, like Timberlands, the insurance costs so much, nobody has insurance on Timberlands. And so I don't know if these, these, these projects are insured. But that's my theory on the security bond. The other thing from our, our discussions with Avengrid was is that they, they would like that these things be cut off right there at the ground level because it's in hard pack and, and whatever else. I don't think that does enough. And that goes far enough. You know, with wind turbines, you've got to go three feet down, fill that with soil and then you can move on. That's something that, that the landowners in their agreements can say, no, you have to remove the whole thing. Remember, that's still a, an agreement between the landowners. This is our Model Decommissioning Plan for what the county would expect. And I would expect that, you know, at the minimum, they would at least go down three feet for any of these steel pylons, if anything, and you would hope they would get them, they would pull them out. Whether it's in rock or soft soil or whatever. There's scrap value involved with that. And, and I don't think it was quite clear enough in there that we can, we can make sure. Just because I know they don't want to do it, I think it, it doesn't, it behooves us to.
It shall and not should.
Yes, precisely. Shall and not should. But those, those are the things that, that I feel for the Model Decommissioning Plan would be the, the best way to do it. If a company wants to come in and say, hey, we want to divert from this Model Decommissioning Plan and we want you, the commissioners at the time, to sign off on that. Well, that's every set of commissioners prerogative. This is a model decommissioning plan. This is not the required plan. This is the model that we're giving them. And so those are my thoughts. And I don't think that we need a different one for solar and a different one for wind or anything else like that.
I, I guess I am just trying to get a clarification about the salvage value. Because right now, is the language there is not?
No, not the salvage value, it was the cutting off of pilings and restoring the removal.
Yes, I changed that to shall. That's what I was there.
I think she's looking for clarification on the, that, the third major change was the elimination of scrap value.
So right now, we're not, they can continue to, to sell the scrap value for whatever reason. We just will not allow them to factor in for our purpose is basically how this, okay.
When they, when they have to go out and get a bond that says they have, that they will, they will provide and they will pull this out and they will bring it back to, you know, pre whatever it was there. That bond has to cover that total cost of that deconstruction. Whether there's salvage value at the time or not, does it, is that on it? Commissioner Chris.
So my thoughts on this are, I think all three commissioners were pretty unified in their seeing of changes needing to be happening to this Model Decommissioning Plan. I, for one, disagree with Cease's testimony and, which is the exact same as the solar company's testimony, which I found odd, that we should continue to allow parental guarantees and AAA credit ratings. And that's, that's one of the main reasons why we wanted to change this. Because that is a flawed protection for our citizens. So I disagree with both Cease and the solar companies in that regard. The scrap value, we've eliminated and disagreed with the solar companies on that regard in protection with our citizens. And by changing the should and the shall to replacing the land back into its form, that is another disagreement with the solar companies that also protects our citizens. I'm personally in favor of the Model Decommissioning Plan as written.
Yeah, I would actually concur. I think the three major changes, the, the thing that really prompted the whole change was the parent guarantee, the recognition that there, there was some concern over how adequate your parent cosigning your loan is. If, again, it's your, just because you're a Fortune 500 company today, doesn't mean you are tomorrow. And it's not. So the elimination of scrap value too was a major component. And then also the changing the should to shall, I think, gets us there. I, I understand people's concern, but I, it's like, don't sacrifice better in search of the perfect. It's a model decommissioning plan. It's a model. It is, it is a significant improvement, I think, over protections than what we currently have. And if we do nothing, that's what's in force right now. We can't go back and retroactive things. It's, this is from this point forward. So I would support the current draft as amended. And I, I think we are, I think it's time to move forward, understanding that it does not preclude a future board next week. If there's something new that didn't occur and we, it wants to be amended again, it can be. It's, it's not a particularly difficult process to go back through and add something if we feel like we really missed something. Because again, we adopted, you know, the county adopted the current one some time ago. We're amending it. It's like, because we have some learned experience now. So I just have faith that you're going to get, you know, good folks that want that. And I don't, I will make an observation again. And just to Ms. Magnusson for the record, I did actually read the lease you brought me. I, if I was a landowner, I would be okay with it personally. But that's me personally. And I do. What's that? Did I okay? Oh, no, I did not. I did. And I would see a lawyer before I signed anything. Absolutely. But I do think it is important to say that we, as we are, as we are looking at this, I've said this before, the people that are not here are the ones that would have the direct impact, meaning the landowners, the folks that are in there, it's like they're, so I, you can either take that to mean, oh, they're either ill informed, they don't know, they don't care. Or it's that they feel fairly comfortable with the agreements that they have worked out between them and the, the companies. And they're, you know, they're not. So I'm, I, I think I'm good with the draft the way it is and I hope we'll move forward.
So one other issue that came up from our last public, public testimony was when the security bond needs to be done. And we heard from the industry that the most most dangerous time where everything could fall apart is actually during construction.
Right.
Because you're not producing power, you're not making money yet. If the market turns around or you lose that purchase power agreement, that company is an LLC usually, or some sort of, of company that, that isn't underneath that parent yet. I would say that the mod, that the security bond, there needs to be a security bond in place for the construction of it. As, you know, for the, the term of construction. And then that security bond takes, also has, takes effect or follows into the operation of it. And I would like that.
See, and I agree with both of you that the current one we're working on right now today can be amended by any future board because it sounds like we're amending it already. And I agree with Mr. Anderson that we should.
Because right now, one of the changes that we proposed, the three changes, instead of, you know, in addition to the removing the guarantee, take care of the scrap values. We also have the funding schedule. Currently, the proposal is we actually ask the permit holder to stop funding the security no later than 30 days before construction of the project. That's is built into this one.
So, so that's funding. I mean, is that taking, it said, there's different ways.
It's not fully funding, it's, it's getting to fully fund.
Right. But if you took a security bond out, security bond was for the full cost to remove that. That's what the bond is for. If you don't provide or you don't fulfill your duties, it's the removal of it. Like when we, you know, have a contractor take a security bond out for construction. It's, we're going to get this thing constructed. And if you don't do it, your security bond is going to do it, to pay for that construction.
Right. But I think what she's saying is the way, if I'm remembering it correctly, there's a, a step increase of that bond over the course of the build. So today, there's only 20 pilings in. The bond is small. Two months from now, there's 50 pilings and the bond is bigger. Isn't it a stepped approach?
Right. So, so there's, there's the permit holder would give a proposal to us, tell us what the total decommissioning cost is going to be. And then they can tell us how long it would take them to fund the, the total decommissioning. We set it as 20 years out because we estimated that would be, you know, the time that the project reaches maturity, that they might either continue or renew the lease with the landowners and whatnot. And, and so we, we, when they propose a decommissioning plan to the county, we can ask them to show us, you know, how they're going to fund the whole project if they are choosing a bond or escrow account or anything like that. We do not dictate how they're going to fund that to us. But they, instead of five or seven years from commercial operation that is stated in the current plan, that's when they start putting the money in the bank. We're now asking them that they have to start doing that 30 days, minimum 30 days before construction.
We setting the terms of how much they have to put in?
It will depends on. It will depends on the to- total decommission cost. So, because this will need to be reviewed as a part of the permits now, before we don't do that. And so we will take whatever they provide to us, and we, chances are, we will hire our own consultant to verify, to make sure those numbers are correct. And then we can have that discussion.
Okay, but, but I don't understand, like, well, I thought what we were saying is, is that, that you don't take money and just throw it in an escrow account and sit on it for 20 years. It's a lot cheaper to pay a third-party insurance company to insure you that you will have the funds to do that at that point. Now, that insurance that you pay in essence for that security bond will change as the years go by. But that's between them and the insurance company. I think what we've been saying is, is that that insurance company, that third-party insurance company needs to be there before the construction starts, and they're paying the insurance company. They're not paying an escrow account. They're not paying anything else. They're not paying self-funding that it's, you know, you're paying that, that there'll be somebody that's backing.
I think what you're getting at is the same thing I'm trying to get at. So if they have to start putting into it before construction, are we going to make sure they're putting in enough during construction? So they don't just, okay, year one, we're going to put in 10,000, yet they build half the project.
Right. So that would be.
The bond that's there, that isn't the max, because it isn't fully built out yet, but it's comparable to what's actually in the ground.
Because there hasn't been the practice that we did in the past, but that will be something that we need to start doing now. Right. And that's why, when I respond to, uh, questions before, I would say the decommission plan is site-specific, is only applicable to each project. What happened in the past is what happened in the past. But from this point forward, if we adopt a new decommissioning plan, those will be the factors that planning staff will look at, whether that's me or somebody else.
So do you, based on that, is, it is, it's probably highly unlikely that someone will use an escrow just for that. I don't, I mean, if that's what they want to do, I don't have, that's, that's a business decision about them. If they want to park their money in an account, that's their business if they want to do that. But the question is going to be, what is an adequate? I mean, the market would figure that as far as a bond, because on day, like, the day I start construction, the bonding company knows how much, how much exposure they have, and what they charge me for that is going to reflect that. So it's going to go up and down. As there's more of it constructed, at some point, the bonding company may think, oh, well, there's enough asset here. The risk is actually less. It hasn't started generating yet. And that, again, the market's going to settle all that. I don't have to figure that all out. But I don't want to say that, I guess the problem we're going to have though is if we have, they have the option of funding an escrow account, what's that number going to be at this? Because now we're having to kind of determine what that level of liability is. Again, I, I agree, I think it's credible what the industry said about, once it's operating, it's got a purchase power agreement, your exposure is pretty low. Like, that's, it's an asset now. It, it's, it's fine for the, except for acts of God, which you're always going to have. I mean, and you can't, you know, it could, you know, the three-inch hail storm that comes. But your, your exposure is much less limited during, like they said, the most critical piece, the most danger is at the beginning, because, you know, they've, they've, they don't have that much asset in the ground that you could salvage and get something out of. You don't have a purchase power agreement maybe, or, and so we're going to have to figure that out as far as what, if you.
The consultant part you're talking about?
Yes.
But again, though, the escrow account, at any time, they could take the escrow money if they need to use it somewhere else and pull it.
No, because it's tied to, I mean, any escrow I've ever been involved with, it is tied to that project. It's not. That's why it's an escrow. I can't use it. When I put my money in escrow, I can't go, oh, I need to make my car payment. I'm going to take it and pay my car payment. No, it's sitting there for that. That's why I said, I can't believe anybody really probably do it, because you're going to have all this money sitting there.
The only escrow account that we have for the commissioning plan for a wind project, it actually requires county treasurer's signatures on it, so it's tied to the county. So if they want to withdraw the fund, they would need to get county sign off on it, is my understanding.
But their plan at the end of that is to use that money to do the deconstruction. The decommissioning at some point.
Yes, like they've, like they've prefunded, it's sitting there.
I mean, with interest rates going up, if they want to do it, but then we still don't have. So what if the act of God or whatever happens in year three, and you only got a small amount in your escrow account, and there's nothing else backing that?
Right. As I said, there is, that's the, you're, we're going to have to, before we approve that, you'd have to factor that in to know. Which, again, the bonding companies are going to do the same thing, because they're going to, they're going to, they're going to have to do all that to figure out what their rate is.
But I think, I think we're all arguing the same thing.
We are. We're arguing the same thing.
Saying is, each individual decommissioning plan will then probably go to a consultant, which is going to look at those numbers and make sure that the county is safe and represented before we sign off on that individual decommissioning plan for that individual project.
And that's all going to happen during permitting now, prior to anything, basically. So it's different than what we currently have done, where after the fact.
My intention is if this is going to be an energy overlay zone permit, I will not sign off on the EOC permit until we have a, a real high agreement and the decommissioning plan approved and signed.
Okay, I'm good. I, I reaffirm my, um, support for the current draft, because it's already, our amend, but was already anticipated. Okay.
One clarification point, when we do come up with the individual decommissioning plans or the individual projects, after the consultant and all that stuff, will that individual decommissioning plan come before this board for signature?
It depends on the forms of financial security. So if, if they have like a, a bond or escrow account, that is something that I have no authority to sign off of. I think, I believe that's something that will need to involve the board or the treasurer's office, then I'll bring that to you. But if they, the form is, um, for like, if they are a public utility, then you, you may not come to the board because they meet this.
Is that, I mean, could we require a public utility to have a, a bond?
If you require that, then we can take out the public utility. Then they have no, they won't have that option for them. They are just like anybody else.
I think the idea behind it is that a public utility already had, like, they can't, public utilities can't go, I mean, they're, they're, the public owns them, and so they're on the hook. They could, they don't get to go bankrupt. The rates get increased, that you have a guarantee as much as anything. I mean, I mean, we have a tax base that, in theory, is bulletproof, that we can collect and pay the debt, whatever it is. But, and that's the idea behind why a public utility, it's the public. You're getting a bond from the public for the public. So it's.
And, and once again, I, I did talk with the treasurers and the prosecutors. And by removing the parent guarantee, and I did ask them if the, the remainder options, the other four options, including the, the escrow account, are those acceptable? And, and they have no further comment on that. And, and I rely on them because they are, you know, they, they know this better than I am.
All right. Uh, do you guys want to hold it over and read it one more time, or do you, somebody like to make a motion?
I believe we did. I thought he was in discussion.
Yeah, I thought I closed it.
Let me just do it again.
All right. I will now close, uh, the public hearing to further public testimony, um, as I thought we'd already done, and move into further discussion by the board and a possible motion or action. There's been a lot of discussion on this over multiple weeks.
I have no further discussion, sir.
Would you feel good about holding this over, or do you feel, would you like to make a motion?
I'm ready for a motion, if you want a motion.
Yeah, I would.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept, uh, the new model decommissioning plan with the proposed amendments.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to adopt the model decommissioning plan that has been presented with the amendments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you for all your hard work. Long and a lot of paperwork.
Okay. Do we have board pending? Gentlemen, do you have anything?
I know, it's like a. No, I'm good. Let me look at my list. Oh, I printed it out. Uh, let me go grab this real quick.
So I wanted to talk to you gentlemen a little bit about directions, um, with regards to our meeting that we had with the, um, water district. And, um, you know, that was a large packet of papers and a lot of things that were said in a short amount of time. I don't want to talk about the actual water, right? That's its own thing, and we've got, um, stuff going there. The actual airport does have some issues, and that is, um, that, um, Mr. Dixon continued to state that there was a, a WAC 13A 20020 that requires every, every building to have its own meter. And, um, so I thought that was kind of weird, because there's a lot of big complexes that, that, you know, you have one big water line that comes into it. Think of large industrial businesses and such. And so, uh, I got with, um, David Kavanaugh, and we tracked down where this came from. And it actually wasn't a WAC or an RCW. It was from the town of Wilbur, Washington. Town of Wilbur, Washington's local city ordinance.
They're the only ones that has this?
Yep. And then, so we did go through the actual WAC, and a complex with multiple buildings being served as a single connection is allowed. And then I put the, the different statements from the transcript of what Mr. Dixon stated there. And so the discussion is, um, in order to, uh, in order to meter every single one of those buildings, we have to do engineering, we have to do design, and then we have to go out there and build it. And putting in all the line and the meters and doing all that for that terminal complex is probably going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars. And, um, right now, everything in that terminal complex, that's, I believe, all one lot, is being metered, gone through a meter, I don't know, and we have no lease. So I don't know why we would, we would want to, to meter all, you know, put a meter to every single one. Seems like a lot of work and a lot of money for not a lot of gain. Now, when, if we ever do a new terminal building or a jet center or something like that, where we're going to put, you know, a big, brand-new line through there, I, I think it makes complete sense then, at that time, to put a new line and fire hydrants and everything else. But the cost associated with just to put meters on every one of these things, when it isn't even in a, a, a WAC, just doesn't make sense to me. So I wanted to check in with, with you gentlemen, um, because we were looking at spending money to have one of the, the local, um, consulting companies start designing this new water line, new water system. And I don't know why we put in a new water system when we're not building the big jet center or anything, because then you're going to have to go through and tear it up again and put in something new.
What about the, because I'm, I'm remembering before that we did, and it was mostly around, it wasn't necessarily the water connections, it was around the fire hydrant, that there is not a six-inch water main. And so that we had serving that fire hydrant, and, uh, we were, I'm recalling before, is that was really what the impetus was for putting the new water line in, was that we needed to put a new water line in for fire flow in that area, because it's only the, it's only a three-inch line, I believe, which is not adequate for. I mean, it's certainly better than nothing.
I mean, you think about it, you've got a, a three-inch line going to a hose that's two and a half inches.
Right.
So is it going to provide the, the fire flow?
Well, I'm just saying, I know what the standard is, a six-inch, that fire hydrants have to be on a six-inch water main.
That's for new construction and everything like that. You know, the whole rest of the Dallas Port Peninsula doesn't have six-inch lines going with any of the fire hydrants. And so when you do the new construction.
Except ours and our business part.
Right. But that's new construction. So new construction and new business part, absolutely. But when we go to build a jet center or, you know, build something new in there, then that would make sense to rebuild, redo that whole line, because then you're, you're building the line to the, to the buildings that are getting built. But there's nothing that's changing.
So, or I'm curious, I mean, it's, I guess it's related. But the allegation that there's a bunch of bathrooms in hangers, is that accurate or not accurate? And is that, again, it's not a water meter issue, because every drop is still getting metered. It's just those hangers are supposed to be dry. They're not supposed to have bathrooms in them. And I, it's, I mean, is that accurate or not?
It was so.
And how is that happen? How are people getting connections?
We built, we built those hangers.
Right.
We built, we built that and put the bathrooms in, in two of those, you know, the, the B and C hangers. We, B and D each have a bathroom in it. But that was built, you know, I've got the, the, I had Jeff look at all the times and all the dates and everything, right? And in our 2011 agreement, uh, it says the district shall not charge the airport properties any system development or hookup fees, SDCs, for existing connections on the airport properties. That was all there pre, prior to.
I guess that's what I'm, that's what, that's the part I need to understand to be sure. Has there been no new bathrooms or anything installed since 2011?
The, uh, there has been one, and that is the training hangar, and that was finished in June of 2012, which the 2012 agreement was signed in March. But, you know, the building permit was done a year probably prior to that. And so we can still look at that. So there might be one SDC, but in, in section B, there's also, you know, we had the 30 SDCs, $500,000, 30 SDCs. We would subtract one of those off for that training hangar. You wouldn't have to exchange money. Give it to you just to give it back to us, considering we own it. So I wanted to talk to you gentlemen before I talk to the city manager.
Honestly, I don't know about enough about it to make an educated decision.
Okay, well, there's information there. You can look into it. Um, if you'd like, I can get you the transcript of the meeting. Or Lee can get you the transcript of the meeting.
This is the Dallas Port Airport meeting, or, or meeting?
Our meeting.
I remember that part of it, but I don't know the legalities of hookups on water lines.
Well, I've read it twice, and I still have a hard time remembering it all. I, I guess, you know, in the end, this is public dollars, and I want to be fiduciary, fiduciarily responsible for those public dollars and not go and put a meter to every single toilet, when it is a complex.
Well, that's, I guess that's my question, is if it is a complex and under Washington law, you don't have to. How does Dallas Port Water get the jurisdiction to tell you? Washington law, you don't have to. How does Dallasport Water get the jurisdiction to tell you you have to?
Well, he was reading from the town of Wilbur's ordinance.
Didn't come back with an RCW.
The only thing I'm going on, again, I don't, the fourteen connections or not, that, that's not really the issue to me. I do have a recollection of before though we, and, you know, maybe it was ill-conceived or it was, the, it, the reason doesn't exist. But we collected the STC charges that were, were owed to us when the lifelight and stuff went. And the whole point, I mean, it was right in as that the reason we were collecting those dollars was we were gonna use it for the engineering, to engineer this new water line. So why would we have engineered a water line that we didn't need except?
They were asking, telling us to do that.
No, it was, I mean, it was, they were asked, but it was mostly around, again, the fire flow was that it is, it's, and yeah, I mean, as far as, I guess, if it's pre-existing and the three-inch line is okay. But when, and if there, if, if truthfully, no new connections have been added to that existing line since the agreement, they're all pre-before that, then yes, they're covered. But if any of them have come after that, then it has to comply with the new rule. And that's, that's the part I'm a little hazy on. It's like if everybody's tell, it's like we have, we have two different stories. Somebody's not telling the truth or is mistaken. So we either, again, if every connection that was there is the connection that existed prior, then we're right. We don't owe anything. It's grandfathered in under the owner. And as long as we don't make an improvement, we don't have to upgrade, want to do any of that stuff, and it's better. But if we've added something afterwards, then, and that's, that's the part I'm a little concerned about unless we just, you know, it was the right thing to do and we thought, well, it's time, you know, it's a, it's a substandard line and we need to fix it, and this is a way to pay for the engineering for it. And we did, but I don't, like, we collected the money and as far as I know, we never did the engineering. Maybe we did. So it's like, what did we spend that? We, meaning, it wasn't us, but it was the airport fund. It got paid into the airport fund. And that was the expressed purpose of it at the time. I would just be curious about that, but that's the.
And technically, the express purpose of the SDCs to be paid back to us was to cover our costs for what we were done.
Right.
Just because we wanted to take that money and reinvest it.
Right. And again, that was, that was right. That, that is true. But that was, it was to be reallocated for engineering of that was to.
Well, I would recommend we hold this over for future discussion.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to give it to you. Okay. That was mine. With that, I would entertain a motion because I know you have a meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn today's workshop or today's meeting. We do have, Dave's ready to let him make the motion.
Okay. I can read it. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting until ten forty-five on Thursday, November tenth for scheduled workshops. It should be noted that the Board of Commissioners will not be meeting next week, the week of November fourteenth, due to conflicting schedules resulting in the inability to attain a quorum. That we will resume our next regular board meeting Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. But we will be here for workshops this Thursday.
And also that all three of us will be on the Child Care Committee meeting.
Yes. So we're not gonna talk because we're all listening, so. That's actually kind of good.
And that we will be on the radio on Thursday.
Yes.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. Did you sign all this? Are you coming back?